Good evening and I want to re- adjourn the city council, we came from closed session. Is there anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report, okay. With that, we will move to our regular meeting. So, we will have the invocation by Jim Stockel from the Harvest Presbyterian Church.
God, thank you for all that we have to be thankful for. For our community and our neighbors and our leaders and just numerous things that we are grateful for living in this community. There are things that cause us to be nervous for things like the coronavirus and the stock markets' wild swings and other things that cause us anxiety. We thank you that with our, in gratitude or in anxiety, we can turn to you for comfort and strength. We do pray your presence at our, at this meeting tonight that you would guide us with wisdom and compassion and love and humor. And we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
To the United States of America and to the Republic where we sustain one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have to do a roll call? Okay. All right, this time, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Here.
Councilmember DeRocette.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
And Mayor Vera.
Here. Okay, we will move to presentations. We have one, Youth Government Program.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, and I'd ask if the Mayor could join me down here and Councilmember Condit. Tonight, we started on bringing back our Youth Council Government Program. And this year, it started in November, and we've met six times as Youth Government. We start off with 15 kids, but tonight, we have, I think, seven hardcore members here. And I wanted to present them tonight with a certificate and also with a pin, the city's seal pin. But part of Youth Government was that they were able to experience different levels of government that which included the city manager, our planning and community development, police and fire, our city clerk, our HR, and our human resources, I mean, I'm sorry, and our finance department. So, I'd like to call up our hardcore, dedicated members that came tonight as this program ends today, will be its last night, and we'll definitely look at doing this program again next year. So, can I have Bridget Batista up? And all these kids are from Series High School. Gladys Hernandez. Brandon Lopez. Emily Marquez. Ulysses Ortega Silva and Miguel Prado. So, if I can have you guys continue standing up here, we're going to do a picture. I'd ask if our city clerk, Diane, can come up and take our picture with the group. All right. Again, I want to thank all the department heads and Councilman Condit for attending all these nights. Again, we look forward to offering this program next year. And I also, again, thank you, the department heads, who each gave about an hour presentation. A lot of these youth down here tonight are very interested in being part of city government, if that's a policeman, a fireman, an analyst. So, definitely, this program is worthwhile to expose high school students to future careers in public service. Any questions?
Well, Matt, I just want to thank you for your leadership in bringing the concept to life. You did an incredible job, and I'm excited what you see with this, do with this program in the future. I want to thank our future leaders. Thank you for being a part of the program. I'm excited to see what the future holds for you.
And thank you, and we will definitely bring this program back up next year. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move to citizens' communication to counsel on matters not included on the agenda. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meeting, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. This time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on a non-agenda item? Please state your name for the record.
Krishan Malhotra, Series. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. My name is Krishan Malhotra. I'm a part of the invocation committee and a lifelong Series resident. I want to bring something to the attention of the city council and to the residents of Series. As you all know, there was an election this past week, the primary election, and in the city limits, we had a few candidates who were posting signs on city telephone poles as well as signs for advertisement being posted on these city telephone poles. I presented the council, or I will present to the council, with eight different locations of these signs. And I have those for you. John Main, who is a candidate for judge of the Superior Court Office Five, had signs attached to city poles on Hatch Road and Service Road. City Attorney Tom Hallinan, who is a candidate for county supervisor District Five, also had multiple signs attached to city poles on Service, Baytown Road, and Hatch Road. And also, there is a sign from 2018 from Mr. Hallinan for the State Board of Equalization that is attached to a telephone pole in, from 2018 also. Under the California Penal Code, this is some research that I did. Section 556 through 556.4 is illegal to attach any type of sign on public utility poles in California, whether they're electric or telephone. And I believe the city should be enforcing this, and any revenue should be going to code enforcement. Questions?
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last name.
Malhotra.
Malachet?
Malhotra.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak, and again, I believe the city should keep an eye out for this on the general coming up in November. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Dwayne Thompson, Series. Good evening, Mayor, council, staff. I just want to take a second and give credit where credit's due. Toby, you've done a great job. You know, it's sad to see you go, but, you know, I understand, and you've helped the city a lot and, you know, grow the coffers, and you've done a great job. And I want to tell you thank you for that and wish you the best in your endeavors. So, thank you. I also wanted to throw in a good word for Tom to, I think you do a great job in Toby's position. I've worked with Tom for 15 years now. He knows the city real well. He knows the ins and outs. He knows the position. Obviously, he'd have more to learn, of course, but he's very intelligent, and I think that he'd do a great job. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm so proud that my Saturdays are open and I'm down there watching my son coach JC softball, my granddaughter. And I'm also over at Manteca watching my other granddaughter play a double hitter. And I didn't get home until 10:30. And I also stopped down to our congressman, and after 55 years, I got medals for Vietnam. I got two more coming. But it's sure impressive that you can have something like this after 55. Thing is red already. I haven't been up here that long.
No, it's not red.
Oh. But you could put your life on the line 55 years ago, and finally, and these kids gets recognized, one, 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 and I'm happy for them. I'm happy for them to do something for the kids, for people in Series, and they get recognized right away. And it makes them feel good, and it makes them want to do more for the city and more for the people. I hope they don't have to go to Vietnam to get recognized, and they didn't. So, I'm proud. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move to appointments to boards and commissions. We have non-conflict of interest declaration, and is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the 14 consent counter items or three public hearing items? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move to consent counter. All matters listed on the consent counter are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. This time, is there anyone on the council that would like a consent counter item pulled for further discussion?
Eight, 10, and 11.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience? Okay, I'll look for direction on the other items.
Move to approve 1, 2, 3, A, 4, 5, A, B, 6, 7, 9, 12, 13, and 14.
Second. Do we have a motion in a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Aye.
Councilmember DeRocette.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Vera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item number eight, resolution number 2020-17, authorizing a consultant agreement with CSG Inc. for fire plan check inspections and fire marshal services. Vice Mayor Rhino?
On the first page of the staff report, it says that the consultant assists with weed abatement and the fireworks program. What exactly do they do with those?
He just consults with the fire code if I have questions. I can use them, that's just an example. If I have any questions, anything that we're working on, I can call them and ask for their advice.
So, they aren't actively doing weed abatement?
No.
Are we going to be actively doing weed abatement this year?
Yes.
Okay. My other question is, it says that during the budget process for 2021, we'll decide at that time how much we will be putting in the budget for the consultant?
Correct.
Even though we're approving this agreement for $50,000, and that's to get us through what year? Through this fiscal year?
And next fiscal year.
And next fiscal year.
Yeah, so $11,000 would be to get us through this fiscal year, and the remaining balance would be to get us through the next fiscal year.
Which would be $39,000.
Correct.
If we only spent what we're saying we're going to spend. So, then, why are we saying we're going to discuss it during the budget year when we already know there should only be $39,000 that we're going to put towards that fiscal year?
Because we can't put an amount into the budget that we don't have a budget for yet. So, through the budget process, we'll enter that amount, and it'll go through the preliminary budget process.
So, will it be $39,000?
Yes, it will be $39,000. That's what we calculated, that we will need to get through the end of this fiscal year and next fiscal year.
All right. And then, on item six of the consultant agreement, it says that it's for up to 18 months from the execution date. But if we sign it now, 18 months is September of 2021, wouldn't we just put in a date of 18 months versus whatever it is?
Yes, that should have been changed. I'll make sure that's corrected.
Wouldn't it just go through the fiscal year ending June 30th of 2021?
Right, it would have been 16 months.
Okay. So, you'll modify that? All right. Those are my only questions. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Is there anyone in the audience that has any question on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for direction.
Move to adopt resolution 2020-17 with the change in the consultant agreement to show the, instead of 18 months, it would be June 30th of 2021?
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Aye.
Councilmember DeRocette.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Vera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item number 10, resolution number 2020-19, ratifying the appointment of Letitia Diaz to the position of Director of Finance. Vice Mayor Rhino.
Well, I would suggest that both of these appointments, number 11 as well, should be held off until we've had a discussion in closed session on what we will be doing with the city manager position. I don't think we should make a decision on department heads at this time.
I would agree with the Vice Mayor.
Any other comments? Okay, anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this item? Okay. Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for even more discussion or a motion. More lack thereof.
Well, could I make a motion that they be held over to the next?
You can make any motion you'd like.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that resolution 2020-19 and 2020 be continued to the next regular city council meeting.
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Aye.
Councilmember DeRocette.
That's fine, yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Vera.
No.
Motion passes 4-1.
Okay. We still have to do item 11, or was your motion for both?
Oh, my motion was for both.
I think we have to take them individually.
Okay.
Okay, item 11, resolution number 2020-20, ratifying the appointment of Aaron Slater to the position of the Director of Human Resources. Vice Mayor Rhino?
Move to, or make the motion that resolution 2020 be carried over to the next regular city council meeting.
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Before I ask for the roll callers, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this item? Okay, hearing none, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Aye.
Councilmember DeRocette.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Vera.
No.
Motion passes 4-1.
Okay, we have no unfinished business, so we have three public hearing items. The first one is public hearing to consider introduction and waiving a first reading of ordinance number 1057, an ordinance amending in their entirety the following titles of the Series Municipal Code, Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations, and Title 12, Streets and Sidewalks. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor Vera, members of the city council. We are finally near the end of our municide journey, bottom of the hill, so to speak. So, this evening, revisit, we'll start with revisiting Titles V and 12, Business License and Regulations and Streets and Sidewalks. Group 3B, there's all the groupings that have been completed, update to the schedule. We're on the last line of the schedule. So, 3B, if you recall, came to council as a discussion item back in December, public hearing on January 13th, and then this evening for a public adoption, public hearing for adoption. So, as you recall, Title V had a lot of changes. There were quite a bit of moving around within Title V. I'll just kind of gloss over this, you've seen this already three times now, but just as a reminder of things that moved from, primarily from Title IX into Title V for consistency with the overall title with Business License and Regulations. Couple other movements from Title VI for the Nostalgia Pollers. And then, as you recall, we had a pretty significant discussion on the sidewalk vending and mobile food vending, the changes within Title V. The dancing provision moved to Title 18, and we'll talk about that the next public hearing. And then, some cleanup items that we had done previously with Title V. Couple of little changes, just as reminders, the regulatory function of business license versus revenue. The council confirmed the existing code format of revenue function rather than a regulatory function. Again, some language changes that were all updated, and as we mentioned, the significant changes to 5.10 on the mobile food vending. And then, updated, as the council recalls, to be consistent with SB 946 on what we needed to do to be consistent with state law, pretty robust section in the municide code there on sidewalk vending under 5.17. Updated the cannabis, as this council recall, we actually included in the ordinance the explicit prohibition on outdoor cultivation for anything related to cannabis. In our previous code, that was a bit of a gray area, but that has now been clarified and inconsistently, or explicitly prohibited. Clarification on the vehicles for hire, charitable donations, and again, no real changes to this title since your last look of Title V back in January. Any questions on Title V? Are there any questions? Nope. Okay, and Title 12, probably the cleanest title on the grand scheme of things in terms of its consistency with the existing Title 12, pretty minimal changes to this title, just updated language, and the structure was changed just a bit, but overall, pretty consistent. There was one section, the traffic signal benefit district was moved to Title 16, and again, no significant changes from the discussion or the public hearing. So, again, this title was relatively clean with very minimal changes in Title 12. So, with that, we recommend opening the public hearing, taking any public comment. This is scheduled to come back on March 23rd for a second reading. Might go a little bit longer, depending on the review by legal counsel, if there's any last-minute changes to ensure consistency with other codes, but it is slated for an effective date of May 1st.
Okay, do we have any questions in staff? And then, none, I'll open up the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone who would like to comment on Title V or Title 12?
John Warren, Series, to refresh my memory, the sidewalk vendors, is this where the restrictions for the snow cone carts and all these things that are on the sidewalks, is that in 5, or is that someplace else?
It's in 5, correct. Title 5, chapter 517, no.
Because this weekend on Hatch, there was at least one that I saw down towards, closer to the intersection of Herndon on the, would have been on the south side of the road across from the old Kmart, that had 90% of the thing blocking the sidewalk. What are the rules going to be finalized in regards to those particular types of vendors? There was one by CVS, more on private property than it was on the sidewalk.
A very extensive list per Title, Chapter 517. So, insurance requirements, a permit required, a full list of those requirements.
Places to wash their hands while their vending crew?
Yes.
And what about restroom facilities?
It has to be closed, correct.
Okay, so where?
Again, we have to be consistent with state law. Everything in 517 is consistent with state law.
So, what would be the restroom requirements?
I don't recall off the top of my head. We can review that if you want, but that information is readily available. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for direction. Move to adopt. Move to adopt ordinance number 1057?
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Aye.
Councilmember DeRocette.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Vera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item number 16, public hearing to consider induction and waiving a first reading of ordinances number 1058, an ordinance amending in their entirety the following titles of the Series Municipal Code, Title 15, Buildings and Construction, Title 16, Benefit Assessment District, Title 17, Subdivision, and Title III, Revenue and Finance. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. So, the next group here, group four, and the reminder that Title III has already been adopted by the council, but with this action this evening, with the one chapter that needs to be moved from Title 16 to Title III, we'll be readopting, recommending the readoption of Title III with that provision changed and moved. So, again, the grouping of chapters, and we'll jump right into it. Again, Title 15, Building and Construction, relatively straightforward title, pretty consistent. There were some updates, it was delineated in the discussion from Chief Wise with some updates to fire code. Those were probably the more extensive changes within Title 15, but for the most part, updated to be consistent with the 2019 building codes that were effective January 1st, 2020. We did update the appeals process to be consistent with the way the county does it, and allows us to use the county's appeals board if we so negotiate that with them in the future. And 15, again, relatively straightforward, no questions there. I can move on unless there's questions on 15.
Does anybody have any questions on Title 15?
All right. Title 16, Benefit Assessment Districts, one of the smallest titles within our municipal code. And now, with the move, as indicated, 1604, through the draft process, Chapter 1604, now that it comes for public hearing, we've moved that to Chapter 3.13 for the public facilities fee. So, in that public facilities fee section now will reside in Title III. And again, relatively straightforward title with really no changes from the existing municipal code. Any questions on 16?
Any questions on 16? Sounds like none.
All right. Title 17, subdivisions. One of the bigger changes here was the change to allow the Planning Commission to approve lot line adjustments. So, that was recommendation from staff approved by the Planning Commission, and council, again, provided that direction. All in all, Title 17, pretty straightforward, some cleanup language relative to the subdivision map act, a few other consistency changes updated, added a definition for the fire marshal, and just overall cleanup, but for the most part, the same document that you looked at previously and what the Planning Commission reviewed in January of 2020. That takes care of 17. And just a reminder, Title III is included as well for that one update. With that, conduct the public hearing, same dates, we'll look at March 23rd for a second reading, an effective date of March, of May 1st.
This did include the changes of the corner lot?
Correct. Oh, no, that's on, that's 18, that's next.
Okay, the zoning, okay.
That's zoning, correct, sorry.
Are there any questions on Title 17?
Public hearing was your next step.
You don't do Title III first, or you?
It's all together. It's all one ordinance, is to do all.
Okay.
So, it's 15, 16, 17, and Title III.
Okay, so at this time, I'll open up to the public. If anyone has any comments on Title 15, 16, 17, or III, please come forth. Okay. Sounds like none, so I'll bring it back to the council for direction. Move for induction and waiving a first reading of ordinance number 1058?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Aye.
Councilmember DeRocette.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Vera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, item number 17, public hearing to consider induction and waiving a first reading of ordinance number 1059, an ordinance amending in its entirety the following title of the city of Series Municipal Code, Title 18, Zoning. Mr. Wells?
All right, the last of the titles for review. So, as the council know, this is our fourth look at this particular title, the discussion that started in January, Planning Commission, a public hearing on 2/24, and then this evening for consideration of the adoption. I feel like I need to have a celebration once this is all done, because this has been a ton of work. We're happy to be to this final step. Again, Title 18, for the most part, relatively consistent, but the updates that we've discussed with council already, couple noted changes, the definition of the ADU, methadone clinics that we previously discussed, and now will require a CUP, updating the sign codes to be reflective of recent court cases in the Reed versus Town of Gilbert. The, based on council direction at the public hearing, we included a new section relative to pods, I'll cover that in the next slide, updated the height of freeway oriented signage, and changed the height limitation for fences in residential zones to seven feet. And from that public hearing, references that I mentioned here, we cleaned up all the references, both internal and external, to make sure that it was internally consistent. The Chapter 1808, the corner lot duplex changed from 9,000 square feet to 8,000 square feet. Again, mentioned the formatting, there were some final cleanup items there, and the new section, 1828101, or 110, sorry, for the definitions related to the pods, and then the whole new section that defines limitations on the pods. And the new section, eighteen twenty-eight one oh one, or one ten, sorry, for the definitions related to the pods, and then the whole new section that defines limitations on the pods. And that covers the bulk of title eighteen, the public hearing will be your next step, and then again, same dates, second reading on the twenty-third with hopefully an effective date of May first.
All right, does anyone have any comments on title eighteen?
I do, can you go back a couple of slides, because I do have a question, I must have missed this right there. Methadone or similar clinics added as a conditional use permit in all zones, that mean in a residential zone also?
No, they'd be prohibited there, but it's across the board, any methadone clinic requires a conditional use permit.
But it has to be in a?
Any other zone, it would, a clinic would never be allowed in residential, explicitly prohibited in residential zones.
Okay, but when it says all zones, I mean, I read it as it could be in a residential zone.
It's not what the code says, that's, that's my mistake on a slide.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I do, where's the definition for pod?
So that was on?
I looked under pod and I looked under storage.
My notes there. So I reviewed it again today.
Oh, I see it, there just isn't a, a paragraph between it, it's under planting maintenance required, and then it says portable.
Ah, yeah, there's missing a space, it's just a space, yeah, we'll correct that, yeah. That's just a, we missed a space as we did the, it was an add, right, so an insert content, it didn't have the space in there, so we'll, we'll get that corrected.
So could there be an issue that it says it's rented to owners? What if, what if it's not actually rented, what if? Somebody knows somebody who has one and they're not renting it, they just let them use it? Can we, do we, can we take rented out?
So any container?
Which is?
So which is, so delete any container to owners or occupants, or any container owner, so delete, which is rented to? So it would just say, any container owners or occupants of property for their temporary use is designated, designed for the transportation, storage, or personal property of any kind.
Or any container that owners or occupants of property for their temporary use?
Yeah, we can clean that up, just.
Okay, all right.
That's, that's, that's just a word.
But we'll get rid of rented.
Correct, just a word, Smith, correct.
That was all I had.
Any other comments? Okay, at this time, I'll open a public hearing, is there anyone that would like to comment on title eighteen?
If you have a container out in the backyard that you've had out there for ten or fifteen years, is it grandfathered in?
This is, the pods is addressed in the front yard, we did not address them specifically in the backyard.
So it's okay?
As it exists today, well, depends on the size, a specific container would not be allowed under the existing code.
If it can be removed, it's, I can pick it up and take it out of there at any time?
Yeah, I think we put a definition of kind of shipping container, which was, would be included in the rear yard, but I think there's some dimension restrictions. So if somebody has one today and it meets those dimensions, then it would just be permitted.
But it wasn't that whenever I put it on, Louis Arallo, and everybody said you can't put more than fifty percent of your concrete. It had to be grass and everything else, and I went exactly what they had. Because Rob Phillips didn't want the, the front of your yard to look like Whitmore on the right-hand side going down. But if a container can be removed, it's a container. You can pick it up with a, a jack, or you can pick it up and take it out of there.
Yes.
Now, permanent it is a hundred and twenty square foot, if you put concrete, just like my swimming pool, I said. Once it wasn't have concrete around it, it was okay, but sixteen by thirty-two, and I put concrete, now it's, it's taxed as a permanent. So if I hadn't have put concrete around it, I wouldn't have had to pay taxes on it, and that's sixteen by thirty-six, or thirty-two, I forget which.
I think the convention's where thirty feet?
Eighteen twenty-eight ten A three, a portable outdoor storage unit shall not exceed eight feet in width, sixteen feet in length, or eight feet in height. Shipping containers should not exceed eight feet in width, twenty feet in length, or eight feet in height.
When did that happen, when, when was that?
That is proposed for the code as it exists today.
Are we going to be grandfathered in on that?
No.
They aren't, because typically, if somebody has it and then we change the code, aren't they grandfathered in?
And it depends. But again, it's a, if this is more like a complaint basis.
Correct.
So if there's been no trouble.
There's been no prior complaints, I can't imagine that we would pursue it frankly.
But I, but, but with, on that note, I can, I can agree with Mr. Donaldson that's had it for, you know, let's just say fifteen years. And nobody's complained, but all of a sudden, somebody wants one that big and they complain because he has one. I, I, I think that.
You can, if the council so clue, you can include a grandfather clause that specifically says, any shipping container that violates this code section. Prior to the date of effective, or the date of this meeting, that's a council direction.
I mean, it's in his backyard, I mean, like I could say.
I, I would be good with the grandfather.
I would good, I would be good with the grandfather in.
I would add it too, so it's not just specific to one person.
Correct, yep.
The other alternative is just to make the size bigger.
Well, but what if there's somebody out there that we don't know about that's got one that is bigger than what we say? Why can't we just put a grandfather clause in there?
Because typically, if it's more than a hundred and twenty square feet, square feet, you're supposed to have a permit, correct?
For a building, yes.
A structure.
Structure.
Not for a shipping container.
Yeah, we're not going to issue a permit for a container.
Is anyone living in your shipping container?
No.
So it's not a?
Hey, maybe, maybe some spiders and stuff, but.
But recognize, that is something that is happening.
I've got two motor homes in the yard, if they were asleep, I'd put them in the motor home, I wouldn't put them.
Oh, okay.
Define living. I, I agree, I think we should grandfather something in like that. I mean, just like we were just talking about, on one hand, back then, they wanted, you know, not so much lot coverage. Now, we don't want to use the water because of all the landscaping, so things have changed. So I, I, I don't think we should go hammer Mr. Donaldson, he already gets beat up enough according to what he says here, so.
Well, and, and, and I, and you know, because of, you know, the, the, the home that Mr. Donaldson lives in was built, I mean, my first home was just around the corner from that. Were built in the early fifties, you know, I mean, how do you judge that a home that was built in the early fifties compared to a, a, a home that's built in two thousand and ten?
The container almost cost me more than my house did.
Yeah, I, I understand, because like I say, I, I know I lived around the corner and I didn't pay very much for that house either.
So can you work on that wording?
Oh, that's easy, yeah, that is, all we need is that you include that in the motion and we'll include the language, that's not.
Well, I'm gonna move it, I'm gonna move it, oh, I mean, but I don't want somebody to come and give me a ticket before I do move it.
That's, we'll take care of that, it's easy, that's easy language.
Any other comments?
So do we need to hold off, are you just going to change it and we'll just make?
If you'd like to hold off again.
He says if you make them, when we get to that point, when.
Yeah, just included in the motion.
Okay. Mr. Donaldson's done, then we bring it back for discussion, then we can address it then, but I don't know if it's done yet.
I thought that was everything too, if, if you had a, a building out there and it wasn't a hundred and twenty square foot. Now we know that the rule is a hundred and twenty square foot, what if it was more, two hundred and forty square foot? I mean, before you made the rule up, is it everybody entitled to grandfather everything that they have in before you change the title, before you change it?
A hundred and twenty square feet is a building code requirement that's been in place for many, many, many years.
Permanent.
Hundred and twenty square feet has been a building code requirement for the state of California that has been in place for many, many years.
Permanent, if it had concrete around it?
No.
Hundred and twenty square feet.
Would you bring up an interesting conver, interesting comment, if the state in their infinite wisdom decides to increase that amount? For, you know, second units that Mr. Newsom would like people to live at.
Well, that's, that's a whole separate topic.
Will, you know, we, we might have to address that, or.
But it's already addressed in the ADU section of our code.
Okay, so it says that if the state changes that requirement, we will adhere to their requirement?
Our ADU, ADU requirements are specific to the law as it exists today.
Okay.
Obviously, if the cha, state changes those, but the ADU is specific to how the law exists.
Okay.
As it's written, and it's, there are two separate permitting processes for it, an ADU is permitted differently than a hundred and twenty square foot shed.
Okay, because a ten by fourteen, if you can buy at Home Depot, then, then that's not, that's not allowed, is it?
Not without a permit.
Not without, not without a permit, so you can do anything you want, if, as long as you get a permit?
Not anything you want, it has to be.
I mean, building, building code.
That's why you have building codes, yeah, it has to be building code.
Okay, as long as you get a building code and see Mr. Westbrook and have it. Because the mother-in-law house is California now, they said that you can build a mother-in-law's house out there.
And that's what we were, that's.
That's the reference to.
What we were just talking about.
ADU, accessory dwelling unit, that's what, a granny flat, mother-in-law unit, ADU. So the state has changed those restrictions and we have built those into title eighteen.
Okay, all right.
Dave Pratt is serious, I did, I wasn't going to ask any questions, but this container thing. What happens when city expands their boundary out, outwards? Somebody has a, say they got a forty-foot container on their property that's outside the city limits, but becomes in the city limits. Are you going to make them move that even though it's probably been there forever?
Typically, when we do something like that, it's someone requesting to develop. And so it's either going to be a residential subdivision or a commercial deal, we, we typically don't annex property to keep it. With a large container on it, but I guess if they went through that request, it would be heard by the planning commission. And then the city council, and they could request it, and if at that time, both of those bodies felt that that was okay, then it could happen. But typically, people don't ask for an annexation to bring in a forty-foot container.
Well, you know, there's several areas where they would not give up the property, but it's in the city limits. And they, they were not able to build, so you got this one property that stands out because it's in the zone. And didn't want to give up the property even, even having to take, well, eminent domain, you know?
We, we've never done eminent domain.
Yeah.
I, I don't see as an issue, I mean, I work on projects all up down the state and I've never heard of anybody requesting an annexation for, that had a storage container of forty feet. But if they did, the process would be when they made the request, it would have to be, just like everything else. It'll be heard by the planning commission and the city council to give the approval, and if those two bodies were okay with that container being there. Then they would be able to keep it, if they weren't okay with it, then the person has to stay within the county.
Mayor, I remember when I worked in planning, and I don't know if it's still the same way, but when we did annexations. If somebody had chickens or a cow or whatever, they were allowed to keep the same number. And it was grandfathered in, but they just couldn't add to their herd, so I'm assuming the same thing would apply if somebody had a shipping container.
Yeah, generally.
John Warren Seres, question back to pods. Pods are basically the same as a shipping container, they're a metal container for storage of household goods or whatever a person wants to put in there?
There, there's a key difference, Mr. Warren, pods are permitted in the front yard, shipping containers are permitted in the back. Pods on a temporary basis for somebody moving, whatever it may be, generally for a period, I think of thirty days initially. But they can request up to ninety days after that, so pods are not necessarily going to be there all the time.
Why did the council, if I missed the answer, decide that pods would not be allowed to be a permanent? Structure in the front driveway or on the front lawn? Why aren't pods allowed in the front?
I believe it's because they're aesthetically unpleasing in the front yard.
Looks tacky. Okay, what about a twenty-six-foot box truck that sits in the front yard driveway forever and is used to store household goods?
Well.
Movable.
It's, yeah, it's movable versus a pod.
It's never moved.
But it is movable.
Utility, I understand it is a movable thing, but utility trailers and trucks and things with tires and wheels on them. Are always left in the driveway forever, I mean, that's something that goes on in this city that's allowed, okay? But you won't allow a pod because it doesn't look good.
And it doesn't have tires.
Okay, so tires is the thing, it's okay.
Well, I don't know that it's tires aren't, are the thing or not, but a pod is typically used there, is usually sat on someone's front yard. Or their driveway and it's intended just to store typically stuff. And it does, it, it should be temporary, it should not be there twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
But it's okay for a trailer to do that? Are you telling?
Again, a trailer typically, people are going to at some point hook it up and move it. Maybe, maybe the person that you're having an issue with isn't, but I think typically a trailer is meant to be moved.
I understand that, trailers can be moved, that's why tires are on them, okay, pods are moved as well, even without tires on them, okay? But the people in this community that use trailers and utility things to store property in are the same thing as a pod. The only difference is, is they have tires on them, and that's the point I'm trying to make, I think you realize that. I think that the council should address the fact of the storage containers that are on, that have tires on them, okay? The utility trailers and the box trucks and things that just sit there forever, that they shouldn't be allowed either. There should be a restriction on that as well.
So you want a restriction on people's? Putting anything in their truck, in their driveway, is that what your restriction is?
If it's used to store household goods and it sits there forever and ever and ever, for several years, yes.
Well, then my question to the city manager, wouldn't that fall under the same circumstances as a? A car that sits there with, that's not movable, when it's, wouldn't it fall under that same kind of jurisdiction? A box van that hasn't moved?
We addressed that in title ten, or attempted to address that, finding that balance, there are provisions that we can, if there's, there's a whole step process going there, yeah.
But, but that would be under the same thing of title ten?
Correct.
So there is, there is a thing in there that if, if the box trailer, box veh, the box vehicle has not moved in six months?
There's a process, the answer is there's a process.
So there is a process in place? But I think that's a, that's a, that's a slippery slope, you say hasn't moved. If somebody gets in it and moves it two feet, they typically, that's moved according to the definition, right?
To, to write the municipal code, to solve every possible scenario of these is next to impossible, right? We, what we found through this whole process is trying to find balance, and you've heard it from residents throughout this community. We, we know Mr. Warren's opinion and, and they should all go, but you've heard it, I've heard it, from other folks who have a different opinion. So what the council has tried to do with this municipal process is to find a balance, to be able to put some legal provisions in place that we can enforce. And there's always going to be one-offs, and there's always going to be what-ifs, and for us to go through a what-if on every particular situation is next to impossible. And from a code enforcement perspective, you got to deal with the facts of that particular case and that particular situation. And we feel like what we've done with municipal code, we've given our code enforcement folks enough tools to be able to enforce what the council's goals are. To get the aesthetic pleasing as much as we possibly can, balancing individuals' property and personal property rights.
I, I can't agree with you more, I know, I don't know if any of my colleagues were up here years or decade so ago. When this issue about RVs and other things came up, and Mr. Breckenridge brought an entire room full of people. That said, we are attacking their property rights, so for every complaint Mr. Warren has, there are just as many people that say, get out of my business government, that's my property. It's my, my deal, I want to be there, so we have to balance it. I, I, I know, Mr. Warren, you must have some issue with one of your neighbors, because you, you keep bringing up the issue about vehicles not moving. So I, I don't know, may, might be best if the two of you guys kind of get together and work something out, because it sounds like there seems to be an issue there. I, I don't know, but.
Mr. Mayor, it's not necessarily with any of my neighbors. Mr. Mayor, it's not necessarily with any of my neighbors. It's with this entire city. You go over on Rose Avenue, south of Garrison, and take a look at those properties there with the vehicles up on jacks and doing mechanical work. And when someone reports that to the city enforcement code, nothing is done. Beautification of the city and make it looking aesthetically beautiful needs to have things in the front yard be the way they're supposed to be. Junkers, cars that are being fixed, if you want to wrap them up with a tarp and leave them there for twenty-four, seven, for twenty years, that is not the answer to the problem. You can cover those darn pods with a tarp, and then you won't be able to see it. And that might be the thing to do.
Also, remember, Mayor, we did add a provision, no major repairs are allowed in the front yard. That is a significant change that it will address a significant portion of those issues. That is now prohibited under this code. Again, it's not effective yet because it has to go through this process, but once it is effective, there will be a process there.
Yeah, I think we've done a nice job trying to balance all people's interests because, I mean, it's not all just beat everybody up with a stick if they do something, because other people feel that they should have the right to be able to do that. And they're not here tonight, but again, I've, I've heard many of them say they believe they should have that right, so. I mean, I hear what you're saying, but we also have to give a little latitude to them as well.
I'm on the other side. I, I think if you take a car and you turn it sideways up, and, and then the kids get to see the gas tank and the drive shaft and the transmission and where you can change the oil and take the, the pan off and show them the rods, and the kids learn. It's just like these four or five kids that live around the block. They come over to my house. I give them bicycles. They bring them over, and I air up their tires, and they ask me what that is. That's a come along. "What, what is that?" I've got, they ask questions. They ask questions on a car, if you, if you're working on a car. The kids, how do you think the kids? They closed down the auto mechanics down at the high school. Where is these kids? We need to put a sewing machine out there for the girls. Hey, this is how you use the soap. Uh, we, we need to put a stove out there. This, this is the way you learnt to cook.
Gentlemen sew too, yeah, not just girls.
Do you understand? I mean, that, that's what I, I, I think that's educational. Uh, no, you gotta, you gotta keep your garbage can over there five and three-eighths inches away from your garage. We got to teach these kids how to grow up and how, to teach them things like, like them kids around the block. I, I, I try to show them everything that they, they, they ask me. And, and I, I don't know where, if, 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 if the, the dad is so stupid, you don't know. But, but some of these kids, they're energetic. They want to learn. They, they want to learn. Other than playing basketball or playing baseball, they've got other things. And, 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 and you, you don't know how many kids, even my grandkids, don't know how to sew, and they don't know how to cook. They think, oh, let's run down to, uh, started to say Doggy Down, but there's not one, Taco Bell. These kids, that, that's all they know now. They get married, they don't know how to cook. I have, they, they don't know how to mechanic. They don't know how to do anything to the car. The only thing they know how to do is put gas in it. Where, where are we going with this? I, I'll put a, a car upside down in my front yard and let the kids come over, and I'd show them what everything is on it. It wouldn't bother me at all. It'd bother my neighbors. No, it wouldn't. My neighbor next door to me, he was welding the other night. I asked him what he was doing. "I'm building a, 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 a duck blind. I'm going to go and, and get some ducks, and I need a duck blind." Am I going to stop him from welding, building something that he wants? No. Let him weld all he wants to. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll bring back the council direction.
Move for the introduction and waiving of first reading of ordinance number ten fifty-nine with the following modifications. Remove rented from the definition of portable outdoor storage unit and include a grandfather clause to be effective of today's date of shipping containers in the backyard.
Second.
Excuse me, if you could just, you just make the effective date, the date of our second reading.
Okay.
Yeah, the adoption, I think, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit?
Aye.
Councilmember DeRocet?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
And Mayor Vera?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Okay, we have no new business. We have one discussion item, concerts in the park.
Mayor and city council tonight, I'm going to sing for you. Just kidding. Um, tonight, we want to bring up the concerts in the park. It's, give you a little information on concerts in the park. Over, been offered thirty-two years. Usually, the city offers five to six concerts at Whitmore Park. They're Tuesday nights, six to seven, thirty P.M. Average attendance for two thousand and nineteen was fifty to a hundred participants. Music varied, and farmers market in the past, not last year, but in the past, the fire department's barbecued. We've had vendors. We've had a farmer's market. What we wanted to bring to you tonight is kind of what do we, how we move forward. Are we going to offer concerts in summer twenty twenty? Are we going to take a break? Or are we going to offer another program in its place? And I get a lot of feedback from parents coming in. They want some more, um, youth activities in the evening, especially on Friday, Saturday nights. Movies in the Park has been brought up multiple times. But just to give you a little information on the current budget for this fiscal year, forty-five hundred dollars will provide about six bands, and the marketing and supplies for fifteen hundred. So kind of looking tonight from the councils, do we make no change and move forward with our concerts in the park? Um, no concerts for summer twenty twenty, no longer offering concerts, and offer movies in the park. And so a little about movies in the park is, it's about fifty-five hundred dollars to purchase equipment. That equipment lasts for four to five years. So we get about five or six movies each summer out of it. It'd be about two fifty a cost per movie, the, do the, um, equipment. Or we could pay a company to come out that would do about five thousand dollars, um, I mean, for five movies. So it'd be about a thousand dollars a movie for them to show it. Plus, we have to pay royalties. So the five movies would be about twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, if we did this each summer with, and we bought the equipment, it'd cost about four thousand when we include staff time and purchasing the movies. So we could offer for just twenty twenty, we could offer each summer starting in summer twenty twenty, or offer no movies in the park. So I kind of wanted to open up to the council to get some feedback and from the community and the audience of how we move forward, that we can get this planned. Um, our marketing will be going out the end of March for summer, so we're trying to get that wrapped up. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, are there any questions of that?
Mr. Laura, could you go back to what the budget is for concerts?
Yes, right here.
So it's about six thousand?
Correct.
Okay, six thousand for the concerts, and the movies would be how much?
Um, the movies, if, it depends if we contract with the company to do it.
Can you show me again, please?
Yes. About fifty-five hundred to purchase the equipment. That equipment would be good for four or five summers, and we get five, four or five movies out of it each summer. So about two hundred and fifty, if we amortize that cost, it'd be about two hundred and fifty dollars per movie. Plus, we have to pay royalties on each movie we show. The average is about five hundred dollars.
So the twenty-five hundred is two hundred and fifty to five hundred per movie, or is it twenty-five hundred?
Per, so if we did five movies, it'd be about twenty-five hundred dollars total, so.
After you bought the equipment?
After we bought the equipment. Plus, we'd have some staff costs, so probably each summer, it'd cost about four thousand dollars. It'd be twenty-five hundred for the movies, and then about fifteen hundred for staff costs.
Okay.
And we'd have to choose either or. We can do, let's say, one movie and four concerts.
We, whatever the council would like tonight.
Well, I sat on the Concerts in the Park Committee for, I think this was going to be my sixth year, and every year the committee has dwindled, the interest in the committee has dwindled. I've noticed the audience has dwindled. And in fact, this past year, we tried something different. One of the committee members suggested more of a, um, kind of like the, what Modesto Moban does, and we thought, well, that'll really kind of energize everybody and get a new crowd out there. I'm not sure where Mr. Laura got his numbers, because I, I don't remember even seeing a hundred people out there. I think the last concert was like thirty people. So my personal feeling is, is that maybe we need to take a break from the concerts, because I, I just can't see spending that much money and staff time when you're getting thirty people there. And I don't know that I would be ready to spend that kind of money for movies in the park right away if we don't want to spend the money on concerts. I personally would be okay with maybe skipping a summer and seeing if that, if that kind of brings out more interest from the community about what happened to concerts. We're not doing anything for the community during the summer, and maybe that would kind of revitalize everything and get more interest in, and maybe get more community interest, then we need to do something. But I think the amount for the movies in the park is too much to take on this, this first year.
Couldn't you go, though, and, you know, because I, I agree with you, it's gone way down, I mean, bad.
Way, yeah.
You know, but how many concerts did we have, five?
I think five or six last year.
I mean, why, why couldn't we maybe just do two? I'm saying that, and, and to have a couple bands maybe come, rather than just one, or, you know, to, and then to maybe get Laker Brewery, or somebody that might be able to come in to, to, so we just don't completely lose it. Because I think, just like anything else, if you lose it one, one year, it'll never come back until there's somebody like yourself that's really dedicated and wanting to get this thing done.
But don't you think that when a community loses something like that, that even though there may only have been thirty people that were going, somebody's going to go, wow, what happened? Well, it's because there was no interest, and people will go, well, let's do something. Let's get it back. I, I don't know. I don't know about even doing two, two concerts in the summer, and I don't know.
The challenge we hear from the community members are, is they're on Tuesday night at six P.M. A lot of them are commuting home. So if we wanted to do something like two concerts, I suggest doing it on a Friday or Saturday night, upping the quality of entertainment and the sound, that it's worth, um, the community members to come out.
But don't we have an issue with our sound equipment? We've heard that before. So are we ready to spend the money to get a good sound system? Because that has been the issue as well. Councilmember DeRocet.
Maybe. I think you'd have a lot of interest, though, I think, toward the end of the school year, to do one in June and maybe one three weeks until, you know, prior to the Fourth of July. And, you know, I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to sit there and think, just so we don't lose it. I mean, there's a lot of things that people lose, and it never comes back. And so, you know, I'm just sitting there thinking that, you know, we could maybe get the, using this as an example, as Lions Club members, we have three of them up here, you know, that, that we're engaged in it, because you're talking about a hundred and ten people that are members, that uh, at the, just like we had the community center, the crab feed the other night here.
Right.
There's four hundred people that show up. And I'm not saying that we're all the, the, the inn, but at the end of the day, you know, I mean, to, to, to try to get people to come down, you know, I mean, we're using that park wisely. It's not being developed, right? So, I don't know.
But you know, even our firefighters, I think they barbecued for us, was it two years? Was it two years or three years? Oh, because I thought you took a summer off. Okay. But I think it got to the point too where, and I might be misspeaking, but I thought that it was a point where there weren't even enough people buying the food from you, and here you guys had expended this money, and you had leftover food, and. Okay.
So what the questions primarily is the concert series, to not do that, I think I'm hearing consensus to not do the series. Councilman DeRocet is looking at more of an event-based, and what we could do is, because we need to plan for what to happen, so one suggestion would be, let's just not do the concert series this year, but look at some other events to test-run a movie or a different concert type, but just do it as an event-based, i.e. a one-time deal scheduled, or other things might be a consideration. So just, we wanted to make sure that the council was comfortable of making a change. We don't have to throw everything out, but we can at least say, okay, we don't need to go planning for a six-concert series like we've always done. Let's look at something different, and that way we can reach out and engage the community, and either way works. We can take the hiatus from the staff's not going to complain about not having to plan for it this year, but, you know, there's other options as well. We didn't want to cover every possible scenario tonight. That wasn't, you know, wasn't the idea. We just wanted to get you, point us in a direction, and then we can come back with some more details, if, if that's what you'd like to do.
So, so maybe if, instead of having five or six concerts, maybe as Councilmember DeRocet said, we have one or we have two, and then it becomes more of a, like you said, an event, and maybe that would draw more people.
I would agree.
Is that possible to do something like that this summer?
Absolutely. We'll get on it right away and get probably two bands lined up, and we'll hire, contract probably the sound in it out this year, that since our sound system doesn't, we should have enough funding, if that's okay with the council, with the current funding, to both get the band and contract out and have that happen.
Well, and, and could we do even something, I, I don't know, come up with a, a name for it, so it sounds more like an event, like Brats and Brews in the Park, or, I don't know.
Absolutely. We can brainstorm with my staff at our, our week, our monthly rec team meeting, and come up with a name and bring it back to council.
Councilmember Klein?
Uh, no, I just wanted to reiterate, I, I agree with Councilmember DeRocet. I mean, I think back right now, when you're talking about, once you get away from things, you're going to lose it. I mean, the series Dolphin Swim Team was here for how many years, and all of a sudden, we don't have a swim team. And there's no interest, and nobody wants to jump on board to bring it back. And I mean, we had, you know, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty swimmers every year. And once we lost it, it's gone. I think we should do at least, you know, at least two, maximum of three, even if we do them like every other week for, you know, and, and, and have some, to keep this thing at least out there in the public and, and at least engaged.
Well, maybe we don't call it Concerts in the Park, because that'll be the same kind of thing that we've had going.
Right.
And just do it like Councilmember DeRocet said, one or two, and we call them an event, and they have a name to them, rather than Concerts in the Park.
I, I would, I would agree with Councilmember DeRocet.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open up to the public. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this item?
Okay, I'm going to volunteer. We're going to have a church contest. A duet, a single, a group, and whoever wins is going to get five hundred dollars. And whoever comes in second is going to get three hundred dollars, and whoever comes in third is going to get two hundred dollars. And the Donaldson family is going to sponsor this. So we've got to get the church involved, and I know Dovey is here. I know that she's got enough people in her church to sing, and we can compete with other churches and see how many of them wants to participate. I think that would be good. And it's same way with talent show, maybe for the kids and series that plays an instrument. We could have a, somebody sponsor for, for the kids. Don't you think that would be great for one of them kids have five hundred dollars to go to Disneyland or go, uh, somewhere like that? That would be so good to, to have them kids, I don't care what they play, saxophone, drums, or whatever. We have judges there, and they get the money. We'll have sponsors for them kids also. I'll sponsor the church, and the, you know, Dovey is going to be the head of that, because I'm not going to, you know what I mean? I can't carry a tune in a bucket, so I, you know what I mean? But I'll pay, I'll, I'll pay for that. I'll sponsor that night for the, for the deal.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
So I guess, Mr. Laura, you will have your staff also take his consideration and come up with something to present to us?
If you'd like, the council, we can.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Do you need a motion on this, or is that enough direction you've got?
That's enough direction.
Okay, just discussion.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council.
Councilmember Referrals, is there anyone on the council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda?
Yeah, just real quick, in regards to, uh, number ten, resolution number twenty twenty nineteen, and resolution number eleven, twenty twenty twenty. So the motion was, if I'm correct on this, is that we're going to figure out what we're doing with the city manager, and then this is going to come back to us?
Yes.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that this comes back to us.
Yes.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move to reports. The only thing, and I wouldn't even call it a report, it would just be, obviously, we're all being.
would just be, obviously, we're all being, uh, extremely heightened with the coronavirus and everything that's going on. And I would just want our citizens to rest assured that, um, you know, we'll take any precautionary measures that we need to, to make sure that our staff is, uh, is as safe as possible. And, um, and, and we will make sure that we still continue to provide the essential services to the, the citizens. I, I, I don't want to underestimate the, the virus, but I would also say, um, I would ask our citizens to not get too, too wrapped up in some of the, the media and everything that's going on because I think there is, um, you know, a, a lot of fear that's going out there. And, and I can speak for myself. When I was just in Costco on Saturday and I was kind of shocked to see people making run on toilet paper and water and somebody was there with a clipboard and, and, I mean, I can understand having, you know, essentials, but, um, you know, not, not, just be kind to your neighbors because I saw some pretty, pretty ugly events going on and, and I don't think it's really called for. Even though I'm standing up here with a head cold, I, by the way, I don't have, it was knock on wood, I don't believe I have the coronavirus.
Believe.
It's just a head cold.
Don't say you don't believe.
Well, the doctor told me I didn't, so, but I haven't been officially tested. So anyway, um, I, I, I would just say, you know, just exercise precaution and, and be safe with, with the health, um, sanitary issues you're dealing. But don't get, um, you know, don't, don't, don't get overly wrapped up in it and, and feel that the world is ending tomorrow because I personally don't think it is. Uh, and, um, and I, I think sometimes things get blown out of proportion a little bit. So that would be the only comment that I have. So at this time, um, Councilmember Klein?
You know, the only comment I'd have, I really want to thank the staff for keeping these ordinances on track. You know, I know that one-on-one, I had bugged Toby for quite, quite often when we had our bi, bi-monthly meetings about getting this thing started. And I would like to commend staff for keeping everything going and on track and getting this, getting it to us and, and us being able to review it and go forward. I know we didn't reach out and do everything that some people in the public and, and maybe some of us wish we would have done or changed, but, you know, it was an awful big undertaking. And, you know, staff should be commended for, uh, how they kept this timeline and everything focused and going forward. So thank you.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilmember DeRocet? Councilmember Condit?
My office hours will be Saturday, March twenty-first between twelve and two P.M. here at the community center.
Mr. Diaz? Tom?
Nothing, Mayor.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor. First, wanted to, uh, thank the finance department and Letitia and her team for the item that was on the agenda this evening, the acceptance of the audits for both our general fund as well as Measure H. Again, another clean finding for the department and tip my hat to her and her staff. They've done a fantastic job and they continue to do that. And that's something, that's no minor feat to continue to deliver financial solid results and performance every single year. So I just wanted to thank her and her staff. Several meetings to mention. Centennial Committee will be meeting tomorrow evening here at the community center at five o'clock. We'll be giving an update on the construction. Most of you have seen the construction is underway out there on the corner. Jeremy and his team are leading that effort and is making good progress. We hope to bring that to completion somewhere in the middle of April. I will be coming back to council. The St. Louis Homeless Alliance, the SHA meeting is this Wednesday. Councilmember Klein has been appointed to that. He'll be attending the meeting at five thirty. Wednesday's a busy night. Since this meeting, Tom Westbrook has been attending the, um, complete count concept. So he'll be attending that meeting as well. And then I'll be attending the beautification meeting here in this, this room. The agenda went out today for the beautification. With some information that I've mentioned to council, that the city of Modesto has launched a light abatement strategy. That's a pretty robust document. So we'll be discussing that with the beautification committee this week and looks like a pretty good roadmap of some efforts that might be worth pursuing. So look forward to that Wednesday. Next Wednesday, the Measure H committee will be meeting. That's at five thirty on the eighteenth.
Tom? Daniel?
Yeah, I have a quick traffic advisory. Our contractor will be starting construction on the El Camino Avenue Sewer Project later this week, and it will disrupt traffic flow on El Camino and Park Street. And the project is scheduled to last about six weeks.
And what's the status, um, some of the pavement overlays? I know in my neighborhood, it, it's in dire need. We've got some pretty inch and a half, two-inch wide cracks. So I, I'd like to make sure that we're still continuing to go through the city and make sure we get those slurries done if we can.
Yeah, um, we've, we've, um, selected the streets for this summer's pavement preservation project and then, um, so we're starting to put a list together for next summer, for summer of twenty-one. So, um, I'll, I'll reach out to you.
Yeah, and if you could let the council know what streets are on that, that would be great.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
We're about ninety percent, ninety percent design on this year's, ninety, ninety. So everything's getting ready to go out to bid for this summer's project. So we're trying to do that, you know, as early in the process as we can to get the best prices and price.
Yeah, and I, since I know a lot of that money is coming via Measure L, right?
Correct.
It'd be good for us to know what streets they are so that when we are talking to the citizens, we can say that your tax dollars are at work and this is what it's covering.
We actually have, um, we actually have it listed on our website, um, both la, the last few years and also this upcoming summer's project list is, I believe it's on our website.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor Rhino?
The last group that they did, do you have an update on what they're doing about the streets that have already the grass and stuff coming up through it?
Um, we haven't.
Is that what happened to yours?
Yeah, mine's like that.
No, 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 no. Did they already do that? They didn't?
No, they haven't done anything yet.
His is a, the different.
Okay.
Issue. You're, you're talking about a maintenance and the contractor has been made aware of that and the follow-up with the inspector is ongoing. We don't have a detailed update, update yet.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Collins? Mr. Crane? Nothing. Okay. Kevin? Nothing? Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm working that way. But if you want, I'll go ahead and, we'll jump over there. Mr. Laura, go ahead.
Oh, thank you.
Just wanted to make, I think one of the exciting things is, is the community center being cost recovery and all that. But we are able to offer free programs to the community. And I wanted to highlight three programs that we are in the process or have started. One is for the engineers in the room is we have a STEM program. And this was brought to us by youth in, um, that attends high school. Um, and him and his uncle provide a free engineering STEM program on the second Saturday of each month here at the community center. And also be offering a free camp during the summer here at the community center. So this is free. This is, the kids just have to register through our software program, fill out a waiver, and it's free. Another project we are working on and we're excited to announce is we're doing a partnership with Stan State. And it'll be a free youth and health exercise program that's Mondays and Fridays in the month of March and April. And last, we'll be soon offering free Punjabi classes here, again, through community members that want to volunteer their time. So wanted to share that, um, some great programs. And especially, um, I would like to bring back the STEM program and, um, bring that forward to the council mayor's feet. We can honor them for doing that program because it's personal money out there to make it free to the kids in May when it's over. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy? Nothing. And I did see, I think the, I, I, anything from I.T.? Anything? Okay, nothing to report. All right. With that, we will move to closed session. Uh, we have public employment for the city manager. So at that point, after that, we will come out. I don't believe we'll have anything to report, but we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be March twenty-third, twenty twenty. So thank you.